Probably speak up a little loud tonight. The microphones, Mr. Pack, the speakers, okay, they can't hear us too good. These don't work, but audio works, so you might have to speak up just a little bit. Okay, could we, I want to welcome everybody tonight. I know it's hot out there and I appreciate everybody being here tonight. So if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance with a flag. And first is going to be the prayer from Mr. Lesher and then the Pledge of Allegiance with a flag.
Creator God, you have blessed us with a beautiful and bountiful land on the eastern shore of the Chesapeake Bay. Grant us the wisdom to be careful stewards of this part of your creation, that we might till the land and reap a fruitful harvest, that we might harvest sustainably from the waters surrounding Talbot County. We pray for the watermen of the county who bring us that harvest from these waters and who face the challenge of a scarcity of crabs this summer. Grant them a secure season and now lead us this evening in good and prudent governance for your people here in Talbot County. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, never ending, ever and always.
Okay, we want to go ahead and get started. The agenda tonight is July 12th before us. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move the county manager's report up and just in front of the public hearings tonight due to Laura Price's giving a presentation, I believe, at the Queen Anne's County Commissioners Meeting and won't be here until 6:45. So we'll amend the agenda to move county manager's report in front of the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Madam Secretary, we've got a motion to second it to move the county manager's report in front of the public hearing.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Next on the agenda is the minutes. June 28th are before us. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Everybody good with the minutes? Okay. Hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay. Next on the agenda is going to be the dispersments of July 5th and July 12th. Council's had a chance to review the dispersments. Are there any deletions, corrections, or additions to these dispersments? Okay. Hearing none, the chair moves that dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay. Next up, we've got introducing Martha Sparks. We're very happy to have her. Martha, could you come on up? She's going to be our new Talbot County Finance Director and we're very happy and proud of her. And Martha, welcome.
Thank you so much.
Okay? Don't be nervous now.
I won't be nervous.
Okay? Don't be nervous. It's all family here now. It's all family. Relax. So we're going to let you go ahead and speak for a few minutes if you'd like.
Okay.
Yeah?
As you know, I've worked in government for the last eight years. Seven of those years have been spent in government finance offices and a municipality for a county seat and two other counties here on the eastern shore. I've served as a finance officer, accounting manager, and an assistant finance director. Throughout this time, I've furthered my government knowledge through Maryland Municipal League and Maryland Association of Counties and I also received my MBA in 2018. My husband and I have lived in Talbot County for 24 years. We love our community that we live in and I'm excited to bring my professional knowledge and skills to work for my home county as its new finance director and I thank you for that opportunity to do so.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Pack?
Well, Martha, welcome aboard. Seems like we've been running the same circles for quite some time. I was very pleased when I heard Clay tell the council that you were one of the finalists for this position and you interviewed very well with council. And I know that you're doing excellent job here as you have done in other places here on the shore. I know Angela Lane is still there to help you along the way. So we wish you much success. I'm sorry that my time with you is running short, but I'm glad to see that you're here with the county and I know you're going to do an excellent job with us.
Thank you so much, Councilman Pack.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Mr. Lesher?
Ms. Sparks, thank you for stepping in and it's great to have you aboard this team. I know that you've already been busy getting up to speed and working with the team, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lesher.
Mr. DeVio?
First and foremost, welcome home.
Thank you.
And thank you. Thank you for stepping up for this opportunity and filling the role. The most exciting part for me during the interview was when Clay Stamp asked you on a scale of one to 10, where did you see this position and your ideal? And you said a 10 and I thought, that's how I see you in this. I want you in this position and you want it and it seems like it's fit well. Angela Lane in the back of the room has just done a fantastic job with the budget over her 10-year and I can't thank her enough for staying on and to help you get up and running and show you some of the ropes. Then I look forward to seeing you put your own name on it and seeing how you handle things. It was nice having you come on during this budget cycle as well. I feel like that's always my favorite time to touch all the different departments and kind of see what's going on. So I see your transition coming on as a positive time and I look forward to seeing you in this role for years to come.
Thank you so much, Councilman DeVio. And I am also excited and grateful for Angela's continued involvement and helped guide me through this process.
Well, we're happy to have you and you have to make sure that council will be working very close together. We're here to help you. Please reach out to us anytime. I know Angela is going to mentor you for the next several months and for a while, so we're all here to help you and you helping us. So I'm very proud that you're here and welcome.
Thank you so much, Councilman.
Yeah, you're welcome. Yep. Ms...
Yeah, I'm excited.
Yep.
Martha is, you know, in this role as part of our senior leadership team and I'm excited to have her on the team. I'm also grateful that Angela has agreed and Martha has wanted her to work with her to bridge this time. I also was impressed that Martha very quickly reached out and identified leadership in the finance department and has already begun to invest in individuals that are clearly dedicated and have been serving the county well for some time. So I think she's a team builder by nature and that's going to serve us all well. So thank you, Martha. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Me as well.
Well, thank you. Thanks a lot, Ms. Sparks. Appreciate it. Okay. All right. Next on the agenda, we've got a request from Talbot County Department of Economic Development. We've got Ms. Cassandra up here coming. Okay, she's going to talk about some really good things that are getting ready to happen. Okay. There you go. There you go. There you go.
All right. Good evening.
Yeah.
Counsel, thank you for having me tonight. I do have some good news to share with you. You all have heard me talk about this before, but I'm going to give a brief overview of this project, of the funding source for the, anybody in the public who is listening, so they'll understand exactly what we're talking about and then I'll make my ask after I explain the program.
Okay.
So Governor Hogan in February announced that he would be appropriating $50 million for economic development projects in rural counties. To distribute this money, he allocated $10 million to each of the regional councils. Our regional council is the Midshore Regional Council. Scott Warner is the executive director. We're partnered with Dorchester and Caroline in this regional council. And so Scott, when he got the word that the $10 million would be coming, so it's divided five ways, five regional councils, $10 million to Midshore. When he got the word that we were getting $10 million to fund projects in our three counties, he deferred to the economic development directors, splitting the money roughly three ways between projects in these counties. Of course, regional projects take precedence over others, but we have a number of projects of our own that I'm going to be asking you tonight to approve the application process for and to provide a letter of support. So to have a fair and equitable process, I turn to the Economic Development Commission, whom you've appointed, to give you advice on economic matters. So at our last CDC meeting, we had 20 organizations present their projects of how they wanted to spend this money and we have roughly $34 million worth of requests for about $3 million and change. So I have asked the Economic Development Commission members to volunteer to serve on the committee. They will be evaluating the full applications. The applications were due on Thursday and so we've spent the last couple of days putting everything in order for the committee to be able to rank these projects. So we will need to turn in our projects ranked in order, a priority, to the regional council. The regional council will then review them and then they will send a recommendation to the Maryland Department of Commerce for a funding recommendation. Commerce will approve them and then we will find out which projects will be funded. So we're underway with our evaluation process. I actually had 22 applications come in and so tonight I'm asking your permission to submit applications for these six projects. And it should come to, it's no surprise to you that your economic development director has some projects that need to be funded. The first project on the list, and you have all the project summaries in your packet and a letter, is Goldsboro Neck Road Culvert Improvement Project. That's part of Ray Clark's project to improve the road, Goldsboro Neck, from Mistletoe Hall Commerce Park down to Glebe Road. He's here tonight if you have questions and want to speak with him about that. He is aware of this. He submitted the application and we're asking you for permission to move that forward. That's for $1 million for the culvert. I think that that was an unexpected expense. We have gotten three Rural Maryland Prosperity Investment Fund grants to move that project forward, also have some money allocated for that, but we're asking for $1 million for the culvert improvement. Also Frederick Douglass Park on the Tuckahoe, we debuted our master plan in September. We are underway with phase one and we're asking for pre-development engineering, architecture, and interpretation cost for the master plan phase two. This is, has come in under Parks and Recreation. Preston is here tonight if you have questions about that project. But we're anticipating that it's going to cost a lot of money just to do the engineering and design. And so phase two includes public restrooms, a memorial spot with a picnic shelter for groups, an expanded trail system that would go through the wetlands, through the nature preserve that the Moore family has donated, perhaps a serpentine path, water access, those types of things. And so for that project, we're asking for $750,000. We're also requesting $125,000 for a strategic plan for the Talbot County Department of Economic Development and Tourism. Our last strategic plan was done in 2018. We had a five-year shelf life on that. Of course, we've had a pandemic, some things have changed and we're due for a strategic plan. The plan is to hire a consultant to lead us through that process and estimates say that $125,000 is right about the right money. We're also asking for the development and implementation of a minority ventures program. Anarundale County has a program called Inclusive Ventures and it is to provide additional training for minority business owners in accounting and law and HR. And the ultimate goal is that they will have access to capital, so there will be a grant associated with this and an eight-week program. And so we're asking for $100,000 to do that. That would pay for four cohorts, so four different groups, training groups, over a two-year period. Also asking for money for a feasibility study for the Talbot County Visitor Center. This is not the first time you've heard of this, but we think this is a source of money that might help pay for that. And then this one, you heard me talk about at the county towns meeting, the feasibility study for the Chesapeake Bay Passenger Ferry, that is a project by Anarundale County. The Visit Annapolis in Anarundale County has submitted an EDA application and they're asking each of the counties who are signing on in support of that to give $25,000 toward the cost of the matching funds for the EDA grant. So those are the six projects. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. Ray or Preston are also happy to answer questions. We do not expect that all six of these will be funded because we have some stiff competition from our partners and again, about $34 million in requests, so we have a lot of great projects going on. The great thing about presenting them at the EDC the way we did is that our Economic Development Commission has a really great overview now of all of the different projects that are going on in the towns and throughout the county in terms of economic development. So we're proud of the process that we've put together and we're here to ask for your support.
Okay. Thank you, Cassandra. Mr. Pack, you got any questions?
No, I do not. I was just reading about the ferry program that Anarundale has. I think that's a very interesting tourism concept, you know, to get persons back on that ferry that would take them up and down the Chesapeake Bay at different stops. I know that the Douglas Isaac Meyer Museum over in Baltimore City, they have a maritime museum there too, Pete. I don't know whether you've had a chance to visit it. And they took a boat across the bay, I think, before the pandemic, so, yeah.
Well, as you know, economic development's a long game and so this is a feasibility study to see how feasible it is and I think it's a really interesting concept.
I do too.
We have four great water destinations, five if you count, very point, so...
And we're a tourist destination that has limited parking, so if you're bringing them here without a car and they're able to walk around, it's even better.
That's correct.
Mr. Lesher?
I have a question on the Goldsboro Neck Road Culvert project. Just looking to clarify the scope of this project, is this particular project limited to that one large culvert?
Yes.
Crossing, where the waterway crosses the road?
Correct. This is actually, you're coming off of Glebe Road onto Goldsboro Neck Road, it's going to be the first culvert you cross.
That low spot in the road?
Yeah.
Where there's been some recent damage to the road and, I don't know, washout or something like that?
Right. And we upgraded it with reinforced concrete pipes, so what we'd be doing extending that in order to widen that section of roadway to about 40 feet of pavement.
So how much is that length of widening? And that's being paid, that widening is being paid for with this project?
Yes, yes. So this, right now, we're looking at a million dollars. It would basically be an extension of the existing pipes that are there. Ultimately, they'd be going not towards the downstream side, but on the upstream side and there'll be improvements on the upstream side that would be needed. And then from that, we would also be looking at, again, establishing a pavement width of about 40 feet, 39 to 40 feet. That would provide us with basically three 11-foot travel lanes, so, you know, at the same time with shoulders. And that's basically to provide any type of, you know, additional traffic movements that would be associated with heavy-duty trucks that would be coming into the Mistletoe Hall Farm Industrial Park.
And will this take it up to where the road's already been extended by Villa Road?
This will be part of the, this will be part of that widening, yes. So that, what we've done in front of the Mistletoe Hall Farm, we'd be looking at to carry that all the way to the Glebe Road intersection.
Okay.
And most of that, not all of that widening was done in house with Warren's guys, right?
The previous section, yes. All of what was done in front of Mistletoe Hall Farm was done by Weather Rose Department. We'd be looking at bidding this out.
Oh, so we would not have Warren look at any of this?
Probably not. And I think that's because it's going to be some heavy-duty work in extending that culvert and then...
His guys can do some heavy-duty work, man.
If he has the time, we will talk to him about that. I mean, we'll definitely do that.
All right. Thank you. That answered my question.
Mr. DeVio?
No, I'm good.
Okay, okay.
So at this time, are you looking to entertain a motion to submit the letter in support?
Yep. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam Secretary, there is a motion as second to send the request that Cassandra's asked for.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Great. Thank you so much. I'll keep you up to date on our projects as we move forward.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Next up, we're going to, the people that just come in, we had a little change on the agenda, so we're going to, we're going to get Mr. Stamp started here for the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Counsel, for the county manager report this evening. I have seven items for you.
Okay.
The first item is under boards and committee appointments, asking council permission to fill the Talbot County Family Network Board of Directors, requesting a reappointment of Samantha Martinez to that board.
Second. Okay, got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Next item I'll call Preston Pepperup, your Director of Talbot County Parks and Recreation. He's here to request permission to use contingency for an immediate solution to a problem that he'll discuss with you. As you read your packet, requesting council approval to purchase a mat system for American Arena in the amount of $55,000 using contingency funds. This is an unanticipated and emergency procurement for the ice rink in order to get through the 2023 season. The piping that runs throughout the floor is over 40 years old, installed in 1979, is failing and causing the floor to break down. In the FY24 budget, the Director of Parks and Recreation will be seeking full replacement for the ice rink floor as part of the budget request. The finance director has certified the contingency funds are available for this procurement. Preston?
So as Mr. Stamp said, what it is, is it works much as the same way as your house floor. There's pipes that run through the entire arena floor that cool the ice when we go to, when it cools the floor and we go to put the ice in. What's happened is we discovered a leak at the end of last season while we were putting in some chemicals to clean out the pipes. Well, it all leaked out of the floor because there was a hole in one of the pipes. We used a sonar to try to figure out where that, where that crack was. We thought we found it, brought in a specialist that jackhammered up the floor. They fixed what they thought was the problem. When we did it again, it did the same thing all over again. We're thinking that the pipes that we need to get through are actually underneath the dasher boards, which is going to create a whole nother problem. So what we're able to do is because they run lengthwise in the arena, we can shut down the left two pipes that run that, run the length of the floor. And basically what it is, is it's a cooling mat that gets put down on that side where those pipes would have been and the only difference is your ice is going to have to be thicker, which isn't going to make for ideal ice necessarily, but, I mean, the other option would be is to not have ice. So this is, is one of those things. And again, like Mr. Stamp said, the floor is 43 years old. It was just, it was due to do this. What happens is during the year, we have a brine mixture that runs through all those pipes. That piping breaks down, that brine starts to leak out and basically it's saltwater that basically is just running up against concrete for years and years and years. So you get soft spots and everything just starts to leak out, so...
Okay. Mr. DeVio?
So if, and I don't know if Martha or anybody, or if you guys, maybe you guys could help me through this. So this is, this is old, old concrete on the floor. The hog neck has been renovated twice since this is still down? So it was renovated once. This is the original floor. Okay. So, and I will say this, we are exploring a possible option to offset this cost through some grant funding that we might be able to offset a different part, a different capital expenditure that was going to happen. So we might be able to offset this with another, it's kind of hard to explain because we haven't got the approval for it yet.
Right.
But there's the possibility that while this will be a contingency fund purchase, we may be able to eliminate a capital item that needs to be purchased this year by the county. So in this, what I'm thinking is, we're very fortunate that it's lasted this long, that that didn't have to be done with the last renovation, which would have made the renovation that much, that much more expensive. This was a sudden shock to you, unfortunately, and it's expensive. If right now the council said, you know what, fix it, we want a new slab in there, you would be disrupting the camps that are using it currently. We would need estimates done, we would need capital-enabling legislation, we would need a year. So you have saved the ice for this season with the cost of $55,000 out of, and I mean, how many square feet is that facility? So it's, it's about 17,000 square feet. Yes. So when you're thinking the size of that building, the cost to maintain, this is a very, in my mind, inexpensive, quick repair for a sport, for an activity that brings in half a million dollars of revenue to your department that you don't want to lose. Thank you for finding this. My kids play hockey. But for the community itself, we all thank you for keeping this up. And this was a lot. And this is one of those times where I'm speaking to the community here that, just like in schools, just like in sports, just like anything, a little bit of work gets out, everybody jumps to the conclusions and wants to create somebody to be the bad guy. The bad guy's the concrete that just went bad. Thankfully, we have good department heads who've stepped up to help and I thank you, Preston, because I've received the phone calls and I know that you've received on this with a lot of misinformation with why don't you just fix it immediately, which is impossible as we went through, and that you've already, you had already found a solution before we even got to that point. Thank you so much for bringing us a solution before the problem gets out of control. And what's nice about getting this and getting the ice back in is, and I think I've talked to Mr. DeVio about this already, we actually had a banner year as far as Parks and Recreation revenue is at an all-time high. As far as even something as simple as our admissions has never broken the triple-digit hundreds of thousands, which we actually did this year. So, you know, an ability to invest, you know, $55,000 into something that's going to generate over a half a million as a Band-Aid on such a short notice, like Mr. DeVio said, right now, even if we decided that we needed to replace that floor today, we wouldn't even be able to get a contractor that would even come in before three months from now.
Right.
And that's just to demo it out and then it's going to take another three months to install it and you would have already lost the ice season, so...
Good. Mr. Lesher?
I have nothing.
Yep. So go ahead, Mr. Stamp.
So I think, I think the ask here tonight is, we've identified, Preston identified the problem, he got the crew in there, we have an immediate solution, we have contingency to get us through this season if council would approve that. And if council directs staff to go ahead and get a full price for the reconstruction of this, we can then come back and look at possibly, because a time period for demolition and construction would need to be between March and September, which bridges fiscal years. So we may come back in once we get the pricing and ask for contingency for the first phase to start, occur in March through June and then come in with the second phase and FY24 funding to pick up the rest and complete the construction between March and September. But that's a three-step process, but if council approves this short-term expense first, that will help us and then direct staff to go ahead and get the full scope of what are the costs to replace it would be helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Stamp.
Go ahead. I think that's an excellent idea, though, that we should go ahead and proceed with that.
Absolutely.
And look, I remember when we had to repair some piping under a two-foot concrete floor over at the Department of Corrections. That was right before, Terry, were you there? That was Doug there.
No, thankfully that was...
That was, that was Doug. And you're absolutely right, Preston, that, you know, demolition alone to get down to the piping took quite a while. I think we went down two feet if I'm not mistaken, Terry. I think about two feet of concrete. So it's going to take a while to do that. So if we can expedite this tonight, guys, and go ahead and give them the okay to move forward, I think that's a good idea.
So I'll make a motion that we allow Preston to spend the $55,000 of contingency funds to purchase the mats and has our full council support to go ahead and start getting estimates together to move forward with a future project as quickly as possible.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion second to let Preston move forward in repairs plus scheduling it up for the new, the new part of the project.
And hopefully you'll get your permits from the town to start building your gymnasium to go along with this new ice rink. We've got some town people here with us today. Maybe we should just hold them until we get their permit. Goodness gracious.
Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you, Preston.
Thank you, Preston. Appreciate it.
The next item I have, council, I'm requesting on behalf of the Department of Administrative Services for sole source purchase of the Human Resource Information System software from ADP. This is an expansion module for our, our current human resource system. This is a, a project that addresses, you know, people, projects, and processes. This is leveraging technology to work smarter and not harder. If you read your agenda packet, requesting council approval to procure this Human Resources Information System software package from ADP in the amount of $51,828, $51,828.69. There are sufficient funds in FY23 budget for this procurement, which, which will provide a more effective and efficient accessibility to employee records and information for data analysis, reporting, and budgeting. This is an expansion of our existing system and will improve our processes by leveraging technology.
Second.
Second.
Madam Secretary, we got a motion second. Could you call the vote? Mrs. Price, just come here.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
I'm gonna abstain because I didn't hear it. I'll catch the next one. Thank you.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you, council. The next item I have is a request from the Roads Department. Unfortunately, Mr. Edwards couldn't be with us tonight. He's feeling a little under the weather, but he's asked me to convey his request. As you read in your packet, he's requesting council approve a budgeted purchase for a 2023 International CB1-515 four-by-four truck with a utility body outfitted for maintenance services at a price of $151,393 from Beltway International LLC of Baltimore. The county would utilize 2023 SourceWell cooperative purchasing agreement for that procurement, and it will take approximately one year for the truck to be delivered.
Second. Madam Secretary, we got a motion second. Can you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Next item I have, I'll invite Rich to come forward, Mr. Sutter. So we have a request from the Hog Neck Golf Course for the purchase of garage doors for the pavilion. As you read your packet, Agenda Packet, requesting council approval to purchase and install nine garage doors from First Choice Garage Doors in the amount of $72,855. There are sufficient funds in FY23 capital outlay for Hog Neck,
Bless you.
Bless you. For Hog Neck Golf Course for this, these purchases, a procurement of, yes. And so, Rich, I'm gonna turn it over to you to explain to council what you're doing with this.
Sure. I came for you, I don't know, maybe a year ago or so,
Yeah.
on the pavilion improvement project, looking to enclose that structure. Since it's an open-air pavilion, we weren't able to really sell the facility for vents because you can't know if it's gonna rain on August 3rd sideways. So, in trying to enclose the facility, we'll be able to sell that for event space going forward and make it a revenue center for us. It'll offset some of our times when we have bad weather.
Sounds great.
And the, the idea is closing two sides, and then the sides with a view towards number 18 green and the grassy area out front would be clear garage doors. So it would enhance the view for everybody that's inside.
Sounds great.
And so, council, this will be a sole surf, sole source purchase request. Mr. Sutter actually reached out to multiple vendors, working with our facility maintenance folks. This company actually services our overhead doors in a number of county facilities. And, in reaching out to other vendors, he was not able to get a vendor that would come do the work. You wanna elaborate on that at all?
I tried, am I allowed to mention other names or no?
Well,
I won't mention any other names, okay. I tried other vendors in town. I wasn't able to get them to come out and give me quotes. I tried vendors from across the bridge in Annapolis. Was told that they don't come across the bridge to do work. So, had a hard time trying to get any other bids on this, so.
Okay.
Well, I was gonna say that I was excited about this idea you had, when you first mentioned it to me, you know, a year or so ago. You know, we, we had tasked our enterprise funds, which the golf course says, and as is the Parks and Recs, to think outside the box as far as how to generate additional revenue. And, and this is one idea that you had come up with, and you approached council with it. And I'm glad to see that you're, it's finally coming together. So hopefully you can get these doors in place and get it heated, and which will extend the use of that pavilion deep into the fall, perhaps into the early winter season, to generate a different, additional revenue. And also to give citizens another place that they can come out to in the fall season and, and congregate.
Absolutely. Events, it's not just about golf, too.
Yeah.
It's trying to create an events base, like family reunions,
Sure.
crab feast. I mean, as broad as your imagination can take you, we can use that facility for it.
Absolutely. It's, it's a great idea. So, I'm glad you don't have to get any permits from the town to do this, else you probably wouldn't, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Anybody wanna say any other comments or, good? Ms. Price, you good?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. We, we got, do we have?
I need a second.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Oh, second?
Okay, we got a motion second to go ahead and move forward with closing in a pavilion. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Good job, Rich. Good job.
Thank you, Rich. Okay, the next item I have, I'll call Terry Kukolos up, your Director of Corrections. Terry is here to request your approval to accept a grant from the opioid operational command center for examination and treat, treatment grant. As you read in your Agenda Packet, requesting council approval to accept grant funding in amount of $352,194 from the Maryland Opioid Operational Command Center's Examination Treatment Grant Program for Talbot County Department of Corrections. This is a two-year grant, and the DOC will be partnering with Talbot County Health Department for services to enhance the Medication for Opioid Use Disorder Program to address chronic opioid use. Terry, wanna add some word to that?
Thank you. Thank you, Clay. Council members, thank you for the opportunity to address it this evening. This is a great opportunity that really started back in 2018 where there was recognition that those that suffer through substance use had no viable programs and most ended up in local jails, local counties. And it was by virtue of the House Judiciary and delegate Eric Barron, who's now the U.S. Attorney in Baltimore, who really came up with how do we best approach and lay out a plan that focuses on those individuals that come into local facilities that are from local communities. So we're very, very fortunate that we, the opioid command center has become the, the main point of funds originating from multiple different sources in the state of Maryland to help local jurisdictions fund what the House of Delegates and the legislature mandated on local jails. The mandate really becomes effective January of 2023. And Mr. Pack is well experienced in House Bill 116, and he's mentioned it many times in front of this forum. But even in his position with the Justice Reinvestment Oversight Committee, it really tries to address the problem and pay for some level of sequence to begin with the end in mind when people come in the door and they don't have a problem, but they self-report that they self-medicate. So really, the context of the program is to ensure that we do a very accurate assessment upon intake. And for those that get out immediately, be able to refer them to treatment services. But for those that stay with us for any period of time, to be able to generate a, an in-house program that best details how to try to break the cycle of substance use. For those that are sentenced to us long-term, we even have a better opportunity to be able to address the problem. The program has worked very well in other jurisdictions. And I think that with the focus group with the County Department of Corrections, they were equally as focused, keeping in mind that most of these individuals are Talbot County residents. Talbot County, Talbot County has resource available, but through our collaboration with the Health Department, we expect to make more resources available for the population. And it really centers on a reentry program that is also part of the grant. The 352,000 is, is seed money for two years, but the opioid command center has indicated that they're pretty well funded for the next seven to 10 years. So the, the prospect are if we successfully portion the 352,000, and that includes contract positions to be able to assess, to be able to provide different programs internal of the facility. And it's amazing, I, I, I really offer the opportunity for council members to come in and observe a session of people who are really trying to seek help for themselves. They're captive audience, I realize that. But we try to throw positive stimuli in their direction so that they can provide some level of benefit to themselves, their families, and their community. So it's really important that we are able to utilize this grant. So I ask for support from the council to be able to provide the recognition that we will accept the money that's allocated for Talbot County.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll move for application and acceptance of this grant.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion second to, to approve this grant money.
All right, let me say that,
Yep. Go ahead, Mr. Pack.
It's an excellent opportunity. And the OCC has done some, some great work. We forget that prior to COVID, you know, the opioid epidemic was here, and it was taking lives, maybe not at the right, same rate as COVID did nationwide, but it was still taking a number of our citizens here in Talbot County and across the state. It got kinda pushed on the back page, if you would, because of COVID. But it's still there. We're still losing citizens. You bring Sheriff Gamble in here, he'll probably tell you the same thing. We're still losing citizens. Counsel, you get your police reports, and if you read those police reports, there's still a number of drugs that were taken off the streets here in Talbot County. So, still out there, and I'm glad to see that you've applied for this money through the OCC and will be putting it to good use. This reminds me of the, the ESPT, the screening brief intervention and refer the treatment that was being introduced, I know, back on the day when I was working with OCC with, with Clay. We had a, a lot of presentations on ESPT. So this seems to be falling right in that same trend of, of processing. So, uh, thanks for doing this. Thanks for bringing this to our attention and putting this to good use.
ESPT was a very inexpensive way.
Yeah.
This is a more expensive way, but the long-lasting effects, I think, will be beneficial to those that really come in there with Easton Addresses and St. Michael's Addresses and Oxford Addresses. I mean, the population, they all have local addresses.
Well, you've been, well, you've been doing a continuity of care piece along with this. A lot of times, once guys get their treatment, and women too, it's that handoff to the outside clinician, that ongoing treatment that's important, too. Are you working with any outside, or do you have any, your plans to work with any outside providers for a handoff?
We have an MOU that is presently signed, as of two weeks ago, by county manager. And we've also reached out to some of the outside providers. Most of them are fee-for-service related,
Sure, sure.
but there are, there are certain ways that we can bridge the gap. Because if we let them out on Dover Street, then we let them out on Dover Street. And all the good work that we've done
Right.
may continue, but chances are they're not, it's not gonna continue. So, in, in response to your question, yes. We look at it, we look at it with the intent to improve the community. It's one of the main functions of a local Department of Corrections. It really relates to local issues, local individuals. And eventually, the reentry program will hopefully go with local employers.
That's right.
To be able to really improve what we have, so.
Great. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Appreciate it.
Okay, the next item I have, I'd like to call Cassandra Van Hooser, your Director of Economic Development Tourism. Back to the table. This is a mouthful, requesting a letter of support. She is requesting a letter of support for Rural Maryland Prosperity Investment Fund Entrepreneurship Grant Application for Workboat Repair Program. Now, don't ask me to say that three times fast. As you read in your Agenda Packet, she is requesting council approval for a letter of support for this grant application, which I won't repeat again. Talbot County proposes to partner with Dorchester County on this program to offer grants to assist commercial watermen with funds to assist in boat repairs and upgrades. And Cassandra will tell you more about this.
Hello again.
Hello.
I see in my letter that I didn't put the actual amount. We have received a invitation, an invitation from the Rural Maryland Council to apply for this grant. I submitted a letter of intent to apply back several months ago at the urging of several of our watermen. And this would be for a program to offer grants to working watermen to upgrade their boats or replace things that need to be replaced because of the COVID situation and the current, as Mr. Lesher so eloquently put it, the reduced crab catch. They're having trouble making ends meet in being able to invest in their most important equipment, which is their work boat. So, Rural Maryland Council liked the idea. We would be applying for $100,000. There is a $25,000 match to this. But the way I have set up the program is that the, it will be a reimbursement program. The watermen will make their repairs and then ask for a 75% reimbursement. Their 25% investment will be the match. So we will not have any match out of our county funds. I, my concern is that this is not nearly enough money to fulfill the need. So I will certainly keep you posted on that. Because between Talbot County and Dorchester, we have more watermen than any other counties. Dorchester first, and us second. We are partnering with them. I have asked them for a letter of support. We would be administering the program, and they would be partnering with us to evaluate applications. Only one of us can be the administrator. And they would be partnering with us to evaluate applications and make the decisions on who would receive the grants.
What's the average, the average boat repair run?
So, there is, Marbitco has a micro loan program that they've just opened in July for workboat repairs for working watermen. And their grant minimum is $7,000 and their maximum is $15,000. So, we're debating, I, I have not submitted the application yet.
Right, right.
It's due on Friday, and I'll be working on that this week to nail down some of those details. You know, $100,000 doesn't go very far when you've got over 100, uh, when you, you've got over 500 watermen. So, we're looking, you know, to cap it at between 5 and 7,500, I think, is what we would do. And I'm not sure exactly how far that will go.
Right.
Do you already have applications from the watermen?
So, no, oh, no. We, we haven't made the application yet or set it up, how they would apply. So, actually, it was some working watermen that I worked with on CARES grants who came to the Rural Maryland Council and asked if they could apply. They cannot apply because that would be going directly to a private company. And so they asked me to apply. I resisted because we already have a number of other grant things. But as I began writing the justification for this grant, there is a need. And I believe that we can do some good by applying for and working on a grant program with them.
So it, it has here on page, your, your amounts are on page two. So the $100,000 is the amount requested. The required match, it says the entrepreneurship is the 25, that's, that's what they would, that's their, so when they take their boat in to be repaired, they're gonna pay 75% of that cost, and then the other 25%.
We're gonna pay 75%.
We're gonna pay 25%.
They're gonna pay 25%.
I said that backwards then. Okay, so they're gonna pay 25%? Okay.
And then that, then, is the required match for,
Right.
for the, the grant program.
And that's gonna go, that 25% is gonna go to the repair company that's doing the work?
Yes. We won't touch that. We will just, when we are documenting our grant, that is our match.
Just the invoice.
Their investment is our match.
So we're paying them, we're paying them off the invoice. So they, are they gonna pay the, uh, the repair shop first and then submit the invoice to you?
Well, that's the plan.
You haven't thought that, okay. Okay, I know you have another moving parts to this. Okay, I, I like the idea. I mean, 100, 100 grand's gonna go fast. You can know that, yeah, yeah.
So, would they know in advance, like if they're gonna go get the work done on their boat, they, before they do that, they're gonna know they're gonna get their 75%, right?
That's a good question.
Right, 'cause I mean, it's, that may,
Well,
that may determine whether or not they go get that work done. If the, if the work is $1,000, they might not wanna go and get that unless they know that they're gonna get the 750.
So, I'm guessing it's a lot like your car. If you need a car repair, you know about what it will cost, and you know you need a car repair, and you're gonna go about trying to either get a loan or whatever to cover that cost. And so I'm guessing most of the working watermen know what, how much money they need, and they would apply for that amount within our cap.
One more, one more question. Is there a preregistration? Do they have to be on a, on a list as a, as a waterman?
Oh, yes.
Since Mr. Callahan, you know, he crabs on a week, and he can't bring his boat in there and say, you know,
Well, if he has a commercial fishing license, the way we have the program set up, that is our requirement.
So it's just a commercial fishing license, no other pre-registration with your office as you are? Okay.
The way I have set it up is that they would need to be a working waterman, and they would need to be able to approve that. So we're going to need a copy of their license. And so one of the people who has expressed interest in this program wants to do a tour boat, and needs some repairs on a boat to be able to take tourists out on it. And so we have a qualification in there that they can do fishing, commercial fishing, or tours, or charters. So all three of those are considered, you know, to be contributing to the economy.
Okay. So long as it's a commercial water activity?
Correct.
But I think we'd want to be a little bit sensitive to the waterman, the working waterman that needs the money. I think we would be more sensitive to someone.
You mean give them preference, you mean?
Yeah, you know, this guy's broken down, you know, I'm not making any money for crabbing.
Exactly.
I need money for my boat, so I'd be sensitive to that.
And so you've just volunteered to be on my committee to renew the application?
Couldn't a tour boat operator make the same argument? I mean, if he's broken down, he can't get the people on the water to make his revenue.
Well, he's not doing nothing now.
Keep in mind, the program has specified they must be a holder of a tidewater fisheries license.
No, but she just named three other things. She had to be a commercial license doing an activity on the water.
There's an "and," "and" own.
They would still have to have a license. They have to have a license to do those things.
Yes, they do. Yeah, going with the three that you named. I'm just saying that a tour boat operator could make the same argument.
Yeah, I agree, but my guts telling me the initial grant itself is sort of, you know, thought about that the working waterman needs the money. That's how I'm, you know, what you explained, so, you know, if I'm going to be on that, I'll tell everybody that.
So the Watermen's Association is aware that we're applying for this? And as soon as I get your approval to move forward, then I will reach out to them.
I'll talk to them, too. You know, we'll do it together. See, you know, make it all work.
Well, they actually knew before I did that I was approved to move forward.
Oh, okay. They did. Okay, I got you.
They're plugged into this. And again, I'm hoping that we will be able to encourage some people to apply for the Marbitco program because, you know, that is also a resource. And, you know, if we can't fund them, then perhaps we can help them provide the technical assistance to help them get the loan that they need through this program.
Listen, my last question. You had mentioned Dorchester County earlier. This 100 grand is only for Talbot County, right?
It's not going to go far.
It's not going to go far at all.
So we had a long discussion about that today, the Dorchester County Economic Development Director and I, and we're trying to figure out how to source additional resources.
Yeah, and you can't preference Talbot County over Dorchester County as far as watermen, so.
I'm on the committee, or not. Come on.
So are you. Thank you for your volunteer service.
I'll make the motion that we approve the submittal of the, well, not application, it's a request. Application, it's application, I'm sorry, for the $100,000.
And a letter of support.
And a letter of support, thank you.
Okay, so we got a motion. Is there a second?
I just did.
You did. Okay, I'm sorry. We got a motion second to go ahead and give Cassandra permission to move forward. Can you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Yes, aye.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
So counsel, that concludes the county manager report for this evening. Thank you.
Good job, Mr. Sam. All right, okay, so running just a hair late. We were sort of waiting for Ms. Price. Now she's gone again.
That'll learn ya.
So we're going to start the public hearing. So Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read Resolution Number 330, please?
Resolution Number 330, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purpose of adding or modifying the Talbot County Capital Project for fiscal years 2023 and 2024 to add a new capital project in the amount of $1.5 million for the construction of a new south well for the town of Easton.
Okay. Mr. Clark, you guys want to come up?
Mr. Callahan, just to let you and the public know, on June 23, the Public War Supervisory Board reviewed Resolution 330 and ultimately passed a motion recommending that the county council adopt Resolution 330 for the south well for the Easton Capital Project. And it was a 3-0 vote.
Okay.
And on the July 6, 2022 Planning Commission meeting, a motion was made to certify Resolution 330 consistent with the 2016 comprehensive plan. That motion passed unanimously, 5 to 0.
That's great. That's great. Okay, counsel, are there any questions?
Public hearings.
All right, yep, yep. All right, so what we'll do now, we'll go ahead and.
You want me to keep time?
Huh?
You want me to keep time?
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay, so if you want to speak for three minutes, if you're individual, if you're representing somebody, you can go five minutes. So we'll go ahead and start.
Do you want to give the town of Easton the first opportunity if they would like to speak on this one?
I sure will, yeah.
Want me to give them 30 seconds on the clock?
It's already started.
Bring that permit up for the Parks and Rec.
30 seconds, Bryce.
How you doing?
Working. Thank you, counsel. My name is Doug Abbott. I'm the manager of the Water and Wastewater Engineering Department for Easton Utilities. So this well that we're planning to install is part of our overall plan to improve our redundancy of our water supply network. We have currently five wells. They are located between the center and the north end of town. So this well would provide a water supply source on the south end of town that would help improve our disinfectant residual down on the south end of town as well as be separated from the other wells enough that when two wells ran at the same time, there was no influence on the water level in the wells. So again, this is all part of an overall plan to improve the redundancy of our water supply network. So thank you for your time.
Okay, appreciate it. Anybody else from town like to speak? I know Sharon wants to come up here. Got to.
I'll talk for the day.
Okay, all right, I got you. All right, nobody else on this side? I see Bruce back there. Okay, all right. All right, anybody on this side like to speak? Is this eligible?
It's a numbered resolution. Has been read a second time.
It is eligible for vote this evening. Are any permits associated with this resolution for the town?
There will be a construction permit required from Maryland Bartley Bar.
Oh, okay. Maybe we can wait on this for a while. Mr. Callahan, since this is a numbered resolution and it's eligible for vote this evening, I'll make a motion that we move to vote.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Okay, we got a motion second to move this to a vote, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
I'm ready to vote, Madam Secretary. Yep.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right, okay. Okay, next up, Resolution 331. Madam Secretary, if you could read that, that'd be great. Appreciate it.
Resolution Number 331, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purpose of reclassifying and remapping two parcels of real property located at 29659 Mathewstown Road, Maryland Route 328, Easton, Maryland, shown on Tax Map 26 as parcel 45, and located on Comex Street, Easton, Maryland, shown on Tax Map 26 as parcel 186, from W2 and S2 Planned Water and Sewer Service in three to five years to W1 and S1 Immediate Priority Status.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
First off, we did receive the application from the town of Easton related to this matter, as well as the applicant, which is the estate at the Gannon, I'm sorry, the estate at the Gannon Family Farm. Ultimately, this was after the council introduced this. This was presented to the Public War Supervisory Board and reviewed by the Public War Supervisory Board. And at their meeting, they put forth a motion recommending that county council adopt Resolution 331, and that motion passed 3 to 0.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark. Ready?
At the July 6 Planning Commission meeting, a motion was made to certify Resolution 331 to be consistent with the 2016 comprehensive plan, and that motion passed unanimously, 5 to 0.
Okay, that sounds great. Okay, what I'm going to do, we're in the public hearing right now, so I'm going to open it up for discussion. I'll give you three minutes for individual, five minutes if you're representing somebody, so. You guys want to come on up?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sharon Van Emberg and Lynn Thomas from the town of Easton. The town does support this request. It has gone through the appropriate zoning process in the town to get its approval. It's a PUD, so it actually went through the Planning Commission process as well as it had to go to the town council, and the town council did approve this project for 200 residential units. There is a commercial component, but they will have to come back for a PUD amendment for that in the future.
I see. Okay. Lynn?
I think the only thing I can add, I certainly would be glad to answer any questions you have. Part of our approval process of the town council involved findings that this project is consistent with our comprehensive plan, which it certainly is.
Sure.
And that went into their reasoning to approve the project.
Okay, does counsel have any quick going?
Was there a traffic study done, a traffic impact study done? If so, how was that study? What were the conclusions?
There was an original traffic study done, and then there was also an update.
The request of the council to extend the scope of that project a little bit further than the original study did.
I have the dates here somewhere. I looked at it earlier.
Was there an impact study done as opposed to, in reference to school population and the number of students that may enter into the school system?
There was not.
There was not?
The impact study, no.
We did coordinate with the Board of Education in terms of informing them that this project had been submitted, along with a couple of other projects at about the same time.
But no study done as to how many, the likelihood of how many students would be impacted by an additional 200 homes?
I did find the traffic study was originally done in July 2018, and it was updated in October 2020. It was performed by Lenhart Traffic Consulting.
How many automobiles were they?
I don't have the exact numbers, but all intersections studied will operate at a Level Service A after the PUD is completed. So the town council did request, this is, Mathewstown Road is a state highway, so it's actually under their jurisdiction. But the town council wants the town engineer to communicate its preference that there be an acceleration and a deceleration lane included as part of its approval. And then the town had some requirements to have connectivity to make sure there was more than just one entrance in and out of the community.
I think, is Black Dog Alley probably the next county road that abuts this property?
It's actually Swan Haven.
Swan Haven.
On that side, and then there are town developments on the west side that abut it. So they're actually required to have a connection on both sides, as well as the front.
So this has been a long-term plan that you guys have been working on. And it seems like this has been, I've heard about this stuff, the developments coming much longer than I've heard about the sidewalks coming. And I know that that's part of the town's plan, is to make it a very walkable environment. Would the sidewalks extend all the way out to this neighborhood? Is that the goal?
So we've been talking to State Highway about that currently. We do have a project that is ready to start imminently for the Elliott Road sidewalk, and then that would connect to Mathewstown. And we've got some easement along, starting along Mathewstown, but the plan is to take it the whole way out to this project if State Highway approves, if the funding falls into place. It's still very preliminary.
We did raise the issue. We had a workshop about Route 50 improvements that the state is working on, and this was, either had been or was about to go to public hearing at about the same time as that workshop. So we raised the issue with the state, and they indicated, I think, a willingness to take a look and do maybe a little more advanced planning than is typical of state highways and work with us on some of those things.
Got you.
Mr. Lesher?
And this project meets all of Easton's usual design standards for no alley-loaded, no garage-front homes, all the good designs that Easton has always held developers to on this?
So it went through Easton's review process. It was, there is yet a condition that will require the applicant to return to the Planning Commission for architectural approval. It will be subject to differentiation requirements, so we don't get too many duplicate homes in too close a proximity. One of the outcomes of this particular project was an amendment to our subdivision regulations that resulted in the alley requirement being stricken from the subdivision regulations. So there won't be alleys in this particular project, and it won't be a requirement going forward unless they make additional changes. We are currently contemplating a comprehensive review of the subdivision regulations, so that could be revisited, but that was relatively recently changed by the council.
They're allowed, but they're not required.
The area in green, which subdivision is that? It's right next to it.
The area in green?
Yeah, I'm looking at the map, past Swan Haven, where it hits kind of Milepost Road. I'm just.
So this is next to Hunter's Mill?
Okay.
Is that the one you're asking about?
That's, I was just curious which one, what that one.
Yeah, Hunter's Mill was the last town development before this property.
So just east of Hunter's Mill?
Yes, so this is the east property, and then the Swan Haven is east of this property.
If you can remember far enough back, this same property was at one time subject to a PUD request, what, 20 years ago, I think?
Is this a passing property?
It was, yes.
And was approved as a PUD.
It was a part of your grant application for the upgrade of your wastewater treatment plant. That the town didn't want to move forward on, if I remember correctly.
It was a lot more dense. It was 500 and some units, although part of that was the Hunter's Mill property.
These other, this other development was included into as well, that was built out, right?
Yes, yes, and it ultimately got vetoed by the mayor because of traffic concerns.
Which is my concern, well, the concerns are still there, because I don't believe that St. Matthewstown Road has been widened in the last 20 years.
There actually have been some improvements up closer to the intersections, but not.
It has not been widened in 20 years. So I don't know how you can add, if you had that argument 20 years ago, if I remember correctly.
500 and some units versus 200.
If you had the units that has already been built with this 200, you're going to get, the numbers are still the same.
It's significantly less, but.
The development. Mathewstown Road has been wide. It's weird. It is a really wide road now, isn't it?
It has not been widened in the last 20 years. There's no additional lanes on Mathewstown Road.
No additional lanes, but they could be. It's much wider than I.
They can't, I mean, they would have to acquire a right of way to do that.
Didn't it just pass the light now open up and it's?
They have made, definitely made improvements to Mathewstown Road. We cited some of them in our.
Because I couldn't figure out why it was so wide.
Turning lanes.
They may have had some turning, but that's just adding a lane to the shoulder as far as the turning lane.
Of course, as we go through our MDOT requests and priorities, and we talk a lot about all the traffic lights on Route 50 and passing through, it's just, you know, obviously, it is going to add to the backups. it is, it is going to add to the backups at, you know, where we have at Dover Road and Mathewstown Road and Chapel Road and all of those, it's just additional cars that are gonna wait to get through. So, it's, you know, it's difficult, and it's not gonna be the same traffic flow, no matter what the study says. And I guess to Mr. Pack's earlier point, what's, what's difficult is, I mean, these things, you know, meet the comprehensive plan and all of that, but when we've talked about trap, when we've talked about what's coming off of Oxford Road, you know, and the bypass and this one, when you put all of those together, and you're talking about hundreds and hundreds, maybe thousands of homes, and the impact that, that the developers pay will not begin to cover what it means for the county as far as schools, to Mr. Pack's earlier point, to our public safety, and those items are not paid for by the municipalities. And that's why we, we're going to at least verbalize that, you know, whether, you know, things pass or not, that people really need to be aware that when you have this kind of massive development, whether two hundred here or twenty-five hundred in trap or five hundred or whatever, it's a popular farm or whatever, Oxford Road, it is an ongoing expense to the taxpayer, and that could mean, in some instances, a whole new school or a whole new wing for millions and millions and millions of dollars. And I just think that the public needs to be aware of that, and to the county council candidates that are running, that these are the types of things we need to look, I think, on a, on a broader scope of what do we need to do with our impact fees? What can we do when people, I mean, I'm certainly pro-business, but developers may need to start paying more towards the kind of big county impact that this has, particularly on schools and public safety, 'cause it's real and it's expensive. So, when we ask questions, we're thinking about the whole scope of the county and not just one particular area.
The one greatest benefit is that we, we already have the fire trucks out there, and we're gonna be bringing the ambulance to the north side, so I, I'm not concerned with the emergency services. I'm okay with this, and I'll be voting going forward with it. And those were my main thoughts, is that with public safety, it's all right, that, that everyone there is safe, even through the thunder and lightning. One question I have, this is just me, what, can you pronounce that street one more time? C, the C.A.M.A.C.?
I believe it is pronounced K-Mac Street.
Okay.
I apologize.
No, that's how you pronounce it, is, not how I pronounce it, and I wasn't real clear on that. I've never heard it said.
Not a hundred percent certain, but that's.
That's what we'll go with. All right.
Mr. Leisher have anything?
Not at the moment.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, still got the public hearing open, so would you, anybody else like to come up and voice their opinion? Okay. Anybody over here, behind, behind Ray? Anybody?
Take anybody's opinion on how to pronounce that street, too.
Okay. All right, I'll go ahead and close, close the public hearing. Uh-oh. Did you, did you wanna come on up? Yeah, come on up.
How you doing?
We'll open it, we'll open it back up for you.
Brett Ewan?
Yeah.
Lane Engineering.
Yeah.
Just wanted to, I guess, clarify a couple of things on the, the project.
Sure.
So, during the council hearing for the project.
The town?
Town, yes.
Okay.
There were comments and concerns about the school, same as Mrs. Price.
Okay.
Noted.
Okay.
And so, there was a, they did ask to table the hearing for, I think, about a month or maybe it was six weeks.
Okay.
And they requested the school board to provide comment on that same issue, and I don't recall the exact delay, but after about a month or two, it was deemed that the school board was not gonna provide a response. So, I, I do know that, that the council did request it from the school board, and they never got a response.
Okay.
That's disappointing.
Yeah, I don't recall the specifics, but that was, it, it certainly delayed the review process for almost two months.
I mean, it is the Easton schools that are the, the most crowded of all. We already have the largest elementary school in the entire state of Maryland that, to the tune of fifty million dollars, that was built, you know, I guess, finished about two years ago, and, you know, the middle and high school don't have a lot of room either. So, when they're asked for their comment, I certainly would have expected.
I think the response, and Sharon can, maybe she recalls better, but I feel like it was, the response was it would take longer than just a few months to provide a legitimate response, is what I recall, something in that vein, so. On a couple other points, too, the traffic study, I don't have it in front of me, and it's been several months since I reviewed it, but I do recall all, like Sharon referenced, the intersections were a level of Service A, and after the study, post-project, with all the background, which is all the other projects in the area that were proposed, it was gonna maintain a level of Service A. And that's, they were following all the national standards and, and suggestions and scoping from the town engineer. So, again, the, the, the traffic engineer followed the direction from the town and any state highway folks to develop this study, and it was determined to remain a level of Service A for all intersections.
Can, can you actually describe what that, what that means? Because, I mean, like I said, every year, we send a priority letter about the problems on Route fifty, and.
Yeah.
You know, I guess our big traffic problems, we have to sit through three lights or four lights or whatever, and nobody really cares about that to get across back and forth.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't have specifics, I'm not a traffic engineer, and I didn't draft a study, but I think it's, in other words, if you can get through an intersection with one green or two greens, I think that's, remains an A. I mean, maybe that's a dumbed-down version for myself to understand it, but that's basically what that refers to, in my opinion.
Would it, would it be possible for us, and I don't wanna put it together, but I, maybe you could, I don't know, to hold, you know, there is, you missed it earlier, but there's been discussion of a possible another Easton Fire Department substation. There's obviously discussions of this, there's the North County one that's gonna be coming. Maybe that might be a nice next step for Martha to step into, to, to hold a work session and reevaluate or evaluate what our current taxes are, impact fees are, and then apply those to the, to these projects. 'Cause, 'cause that's, it's not, the impact fee gets paid what, when the permit gets per house, right?
There's a water and sewer charge at time of recordation of the lot, and then there's the impact fees for town and county. I, basically total, I'd say about fifteen thousand dollars per house. So, fifteen thousand times two hundred is what this town and counties will be getting, and percentages of that goes to transportation, schools, emergency services. So, there is a breakdown that both county and town have. So, it's not like these folks are coming in and not paying a fee, a charge for this.
Yeah, but those, those impact fees are only applied to that, to this jurisdiction with this, this development.
No, no, the county gets a bite of the apple, even if it's in the town of Easton.
But we can only apply those, those impact fees back to that particular area. We can't apply those impact fees countywide.
Right.
So, although we, although we cannot take these impact fees and take them down to St. Michael's and apply them to the school system down there, they only can go towards the area that the impact is, is directed in. So, you're right, we do get some impact fees off this development, but, you know, they, they only can be applied in this area. They can't be applied down towards White Marsh School System, they can't be applied down in Tillman, they can't be applied down to our other services that we run countywide. Black Dog Alley is only two streets over. I can guarantee you, these two hundred roads, these two hundred homes will impact Black Dog Alley. I can guarantee you.
So, let, let's do a little math here.
And we just redid Black Dog Alley.
I'll let you go first, and I got a question.
So, I just wanted to remind council, we are under contract with Tischler to review the impact, the impact fees, which would be a prime opportunity to have a conversation, and maybe not just with the county, but have an open conversation with the municipalities and the county together to figure out a way, not only to address what impact fees are, but how we might be able to enhance communication, which would help everybody.
I like that, and, and, and the benefit of this neighborhood is that it is in the town of Easton Limits, where the schools are the biggest, are already filled the most, so that's the one that's gonna need a wing or whatever to be done. So, I, that, that's why I'm okay with this project, because I know that we are gonna have to reevaluate that, but this is in the town, it's not gonna hurt the county.
Well, it could, 'cause, I mean, the, the, the school, the school board had to, had to move kids around because of the overcrowding situation. They sent kids down to St., down, down to.
These kids were probably at Chapel, if there was a difference.
Yeah, but they, they would have, they end up moving kids around. So, it, it impacts the entire system, just because they, these homes are in the town of Easton. When the school system does their calculations for our students, they sometimes move students outside of the town of Easton to make things work.
So, let me, let me, let's do a little math here. Fifteen thousand dollars a house, sounds like a lot of money. Multiply that by two hundred, it's three million dollars. Still sounds like a lot of money. Now, how much does the town get? How much does the county get, approximately? Angela or Martha?
I think it's about sixty, forty.
Sixty, forty to the county?
Sixty for the town, forty for the county. I think the town impact fee is higher.
Okay, so then the county ends up with maybe one point, one and a quarter?
Yeah, county is, is.
All right, so let's just say it's even fifty, fifty. County gets about a million and a half dollars. How far do you think that's gonna go to build a part of a school?
What's the next school to be renovated? High school and then the middle?
I'm just saying, a million and a half dollars towards, towards a school is peanuts when we just spent fifty million dollars on a whole new school, which is why we need to address this, the, the impact fees. They aren't anywhere near close. When you have developments of this scale, two hundred homes, five hundred homes, two, you know, twenty-five hundred and one homes, it doesn't cover the expense. And fifteen thousand, you say, oh, that's a lot of money per home, because we're trying to get affordable housing, and of course we are, but somehow, this, this stuff has got to be paid for, for the long-term impact, and the additional students per pupil that we have to pay, not just the cost of the construction of the school, but more, you know, more kids. The town doesn't contribute, the towns don't contribute a penny towards our school systems. Some of them have their own public safety for police, but we're covering all the EMTs and paramedics. The towns don't contribute to that. It's a problem.
So.
It's not on you. I'm not saying you just have to sit in there.
Come on, Brett. Come on, Brett.
I'm working on it. So, I was just gonna end my part here to say I was here to provide project specifics. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Just wanted to point out that it's, it is in the town of Easton, it is in the comp plan for residential development, so the town found it consistent with the comprehensive plan, and I believe it's pronounced K-Mac Street.
Thank you.
All right, so to that, so that point, so for the town's comprehensive plan, of course it fits, because they don't pay for EMTs, paramedics, or schools, so they can handle it. County, on the other hand, we're stuck with a big bill.
Okay. All right. Still in the public hearing, anybody else want to come up and speak? Okay. All right, I'll close the public hearing.
I will move, move, that we move resolution three thirty-one to vote?
I, I'd like, I'd like to request that we, this is a big matter, we shouldn't be rushing this to, to a vote. I, I'd, I'd request that we leave the public record open on this.
Okay.
Until the next meeting.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
To Angela and or Martha, we get additional property tax with additional homes. With our revenue cap, are we, we are still able to capture all of that additional revenue, are we not? Is that not part of the cap? Do you wanna come up here for a second?
Like, in the very first year, we would capture the new construction component, but then after that, it rolls into our two percent limitation. So, we don't truly get the full impact of new construction. You know, two hundred new houses is going to increase our accessible base.
I'm sorry, I, I can hear you, but the public might not be able to. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lane.
The county tax limitation is on revenues, so the two hundred new homes will increase our accessible base. And if we keep your tax rate at the same amount, two hundred new homes, we're gonna generate more money through property tax revenues, but we are limited to only being able to increase that by two percent of what we earned in the prior year through real property tax revenues. So, if the new construction would add a three percent increase to total real property tax revenues, we have to adjust our real property tax rate to only collect a two percent increase in real property tax revenues. So, we don't necessarily get the full benefit from increasing assessments that another jurisdiction does.
Right, so the rate goes down, and we saw this, when we talked about the, the increase that we wanted to do for twenty years, I remember that inverse chart that, because of our, our tax revenue cap.
As the, as our accessible base increases.
The rates go down.
We often have to reduce our tax rate to stay within the confines of our revenue cap, because it's a revenue cap.
Yep. Yeah, so, and again, another reason that, you know, I was just thinking, property taxes, yeah, we're gonna get that revenue, but we're really not gonna get a whole heck of a lot more from property taxes, even with all these additional homes.
Well, we're still limited to that two percent limitation.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. Thank you, Angela. So, council's preference to hold off on, on this vote?
Please, if we, if we would.
Okay, all right, that sounds good. So, Madam Secretary, we'll just, we'll put that on the agenda for next meeting? Is that?
Do you want to keep the, the record open till Friday this week?
Yeah, let's leave, let's leave that open, Madam Secretary, to this Friday, and we'll put it on the agenda for, for next meeting.
Does this one expire? Like, if we wanted to wait until the Tischler study was done?
No, it does not. It does not expire.
So, that's some, something to keep in the backs of our minds, too, if we can see that report, and whether we can make adjustments, and how that works.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll, so everybody understands, we'll go ahead and take comments to Friday, and then we'll leave it, we'll leave it open to Friday, and then we'll, we'll bring it back to the next meeting. Okay. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and, and read three, three thirty-two, please?
Resolution number three thirty-two, a resolution to place questions on the ballot at the 2022 general election to amend section two oh seven of the Charter of Talbot County to increase the compensation of the county council from fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars per annum to twenty-five thousand dollars per annum, with the council present to receive an additional one thousand dollars per annum, and to provide that the council may set by resolution, compensation of council members and the president of the council, differing from that set forth in section two oh seven, provided, however, that such resolutions shall require at least a fourth, fifth vote of the council be adopted prior to the next general election for the office of council member, and take effect commencing with the forthcoming council term.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, so I'll open it up to the public. Anybody like?
Mr. President? Yes, yes. Before, before we get into this, I have an amendment to this that I would like to offer. Which was, was drafted if, and the amendment is simply, rather than increasing this to twenty-five thousand per annum, it would, it would increase the, the compensation only to nineteen thousand, two hundred. And you might ask how we get to that number. Fourteen thousand, four hundred is the current council compensation. That is presumably arrived at if you take eighty hours per month, times twelve months, times fifteen dollars per hour. You come up with fourteen thousand, four hundred. I think that, that is apparently how that was calculated. If you increase that to twenty dollars per hour for the same hours, you come up with nineteen thousand, two hundred. Part of my rationale for introducing this is, well, one, one simply to make this more, a more palatable increase, a more modest increase, and since the councils, the last time the council compensation was, was adjusted was twenty years ago, if you put a, if you put this into the Bureau of Labor Statistics Inflation Adjusters, you, from the fourteen thousand, four hundred over that twenty-year period, you would come up with a figure in the neighborhood of twenty-three thousand, a little short of the twenty-five that was in the original draft of this. This brings this, this proposal down well under to a little more than half of the, the rate of inflation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lusher, um, anybody on the council would like to comment? Go ahead.
Yes. Talbot County is the lowest in the state at fourteen thousand four hundred. Surrounding counties are all higher, and all counties are higher. And fifteen dollars an hour, I mean, yes, this is a part-time, this is a part-time job for us, but it is a lot of work. And I think we tried, uh, I want to say it might have been twenty-fourteen, we had it on the ballot, you know, and it, and it failed then. Even twenty dollars an hour, you know, as we come into election season and three of us are not running, so this is not to benefit me or Mr. Pack or Mr. DeVilio because we are not running. This would only take effect with a new county council. What I do like about the bill is that it does provide for a four-fifths vote of a future council to make an adjustment because it's, it's too hard to take this to the ballot because people are like, oh, you know, they're mad at something that we did, I'm not going to give them more money. But when you look at what the other jurisdictions pay, um, Queen Anne's County is at twenty-five thousand dollars, Kent County, which is much, much smaller than us, is at twenty thousand dollars. And then, of course, you have the larger jurisdictions, and I understand they're full-time, uh, full-time jobs, Montgomery County, you know, Baltimore County, things like that that are making a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Granted, they are full-time jobs. But if, if what's worth to you to pay a council member fifteen or twenty dollars an hour is, I, I think it's embarrassing. And the twenty-five thousand, which is on par with Queen Anne's County, um, still not a lot of money. I mean, we don't do this for the money even at twenty-five thousand dollars. We are much more on par with, with a Queen Anne's County, you know, uh, not quite the same budget we're all. But I just think that that is, I, it looks like a huge increase, but you just have to put it into perspective. And I do have the chart and I, and I'm, you know, um, which I think we can get on, you know, obviously, I think something's going to get on the ballot, obviously. One of these two numbers is going to get on the ballot for y'all to look at. But I, I would respectfully ask to, to stick at the twenty-five thousand. I think that's going to hold us, you know, or whoever's on here for a while. They won't necessarily have to go back for working for four-fifths and, 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 and get a bite at the apple. Let's let them do their, their, their job, um, with a, you know, something that's, that's comfortable. But I think if the public saw what the other counties, um, were paying, and still, we're talking about twenty-five thousand is twenty-six dollars an hour. Is a council member worth twenty-six dollars an hour? We're making some huge decisions up here. We're doing a budget that's over a hundred million dollars. We're building fifty million dollar schools. We're, um, you know, the public safety that reaches out to all of you, I think you want people here, um, you know, who are worth that kind of money. I know how difficult it was for me owning a business and taking time away from that. I mean, I had a job I could, a business I could do that, but I had to pay staff to be there on days that I couldn't be there. You know, Mr. Lusher is fortunate right now. He's got a full-time job that gives him that flexibility. Not all employers will do that. And if you own your own business, trust me, I was paying someone to, you know, to take my place. So while you look at the compensation, there, there can be an expense, um, to a council member. And so twenty-five thousand dollars is still not a lot of money, and it's, and it's only twenty-six dollars an hour. So that's what I would just, you know, ask you all to think about. What is the value to somebody who dedicates their time, their family life, their job, sometimes to be, you know, if you own your own business, sometimes it takes away, people get angry at decisions. It's a risk. It really is a risk, and in order to make that risk worthwhile, you know, a, a reasonable compensation, um, sure as heck isn't going to break the budget for the county. You know, it's going to add to a, to a hundred and ten million dollar budget. This twenty-five thousand dollars a year is going to add, what, fifty thousand dollars to a hundred and ten million dollar budget? It really is very, very small. So do you add twenty-five thousand dollars to the budget or fifty thousand to the dollars, to the budget? I think that the council members who've been here have done a really good job. I think our department heads do a really good job at, um, be very effective and efficient with their budgets, and I think that this is, you know, really reasonable. So when we're making this decision, and I was hoping we could have a work session and not just a public hearing on this, and, and, and nobody's here to even comment on a public hearing, um, but I think all of us up here, we know how much work this is.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Price. Well said, and, um, Mr. Pack?
Uh, well, I, I would agree with, you know, with what, much of what both, um, Mr. Lusher and Mrs. Price, um, just commented on, and, and, and look, um, the hours that we spend up here every other Tuesday are not the, the, the whole parts of being a council member and elected official. You know, there's many hours of, 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 of reading documents and bills and being prepared, there's meeting with staff, uh, on, on many issues, there's going down and doing tours of business projects. I'm about to do a tour of the, of the, um, St. Murray Square property we're about to purchase for our emergency, um, um, public, um, safety complex. You know, those things add to that total, Mr. Lusher. I know you, you know, you did your due diligence trying to come to that hourly rate, but, you know, you gotta, you gotta even go beyond that, you know, and, and all the hours of reading and, um, reading emails and answering phone calls. Uh, I, I can't tell you how many phone calls over the years I got on the weekends and after hours, and I mean, phone calls I made to staff on the weekends and after hours. I would call Ms. Vertary many times on her ride home and, and, and talk to her. So, um, it, it, it is, uh, it is a great deal more than just a part-time job, you know, and I think if you are an elected official, um, persons expect you to not take this as a part-time job. They expect you to put your all into it, your all, um, and not just say, hey, when I, when I'm, if it's not Tuesday, I'm not answering phone calls, I'm not answering emails unless it's Tuesday. They, they don't expect you to take the job that way, uh, and I think for many of us, we don't take the job that way. We, we respond to citizens when they need us, and we make those visits when it, when it's appropriate for us to make those visits. We talk to staff in detail when we need to, and we help in the drafting of bills and talking with our county attorney. So, um, it is a great deal more than just what it was in, in nineteen seventy-two when the first council, seventy-two, seventy, whatever, seventy-one. There, there's much more to what we do. And let me tell you this, I mean, if people don't know, this, this is an award-winning council. I mean, uh, Mr. DeVilio was there down in Ocean City this year, um, when, um, the Maryland Association of Counties, uh, gave Talbot County an award. We won an award, national award that I have here for, for NACO, uh, the National Association of Counties. So this is an award-winning county under this council's leadership. So, um, you know, when citizens go to recognize, uh, increases to public safety and increases to, uh, other departments, they look at, you know, well, how are those departments, uh, how are they working? How, how are they, um, producing? And, uh, I think, um, going through all we went through over this last four years with this pandemic, you know, we still rose to the occasion, and we still got our recognition of, of outside agencies and on the national level, on the state level, um, even with all that we had to face. So, um, I do appreciate both of you, um, drafting this and, and recognizing that, and again, it's not for me, you know, it's for the other county. I know we have one, one candidate out here in the audience with us today, um, but it's for whoever's going to occupy this, these chairs because we know, we know what they're going to have to deal with, and it's not just every other Tuesday. If you, if you think that's all this, this is about, please don't run. Please take, please do not run. If you think that this, this is just about every second and, and fourth Tuesday because it's not. It is not. So, um, again, thank you both for recognizing and, uh, uh, what we're going, what we have to do here and what other members have to do, and, and I will lend my support to either, resolution as, as membersy fit.
I mean, don't you think it's interesting that two people who aren't running are so strongly in favor of this because, you know, we know?
Right, right. Mr. DeVilio?
I'm not in favor of it. My, my iPad's open. The minute I get in the office, it is opened up and, um, it's a third, fourth computer monitor in my office. And I respond to emails all the time, phone calls all the time. Over the last four years, if I had had a few more thousand bucks paid to me, um, it would have just meant more donations to the community. It, it, it wouldn't have bought me any more Civil War books that I read, a library full. It, it wouldn't have, um, benefited me on the Neighborhood Service Center, which I'm in there, you know, three, four days a, a week working, um, as the chair of the board, um, Parks and Rec Board, you know, at least twice a month, I'm out there. The, the senior center, you know, I volunteer, I'm on, on their board there, the, uh, uh, Commission on Aging, you know, that's a monthly meeting. You know, I got into Meals on Wheels for that. Not, I mean, this wouldn't even really cover the gas difference, and I'm one to pay, if I'm going to go to something, it's, it's to better me. I did this to better me, to learn more about the community and how I could be a better citizen, giving back to the community. And so if, if, if I'm going to go to Mako, I'm going to try to pay my own hotel room, I'm going to try to cover as much of, of the expense as I can because, again, I'm doing it for me to better the communities the way I see it. And it's a hundred and ten million dollar budget. If you need four thousand dollars more a year to sit up here, you're not physically responsible enough to, to operate a hundred and ten million dollar budget. Unfortunately, you're not there. You got the initiative, you'll get there, and, and, and that's great, and, and strive for it. But it's, you, this is a governing body and not just peers that are up here, and not, not just folks that just want to, and it, and it is a tremendous more than just showing up twice a month and voting on bills that somebody's giving you guidance on, your, who's in your ear regularly, you know, one subject matter expert, and then an empty room of nobody making comments on it. It, it, it takes a lot more than that just because of all the different boards and commissions that you sit on, as well as you should be spending time out in the community, attending the events to see how well things work and to coordinate everything together. My, and I research around. I, I look at Lower Delaware a lot for things. Wycomico County surprised me, wake up Cassandra, when I looked at their, you know, economic development for Wycomico County's part of Parks and Rec. So when everybody's calling up saying, why can't we have all these artificial turf fields? I want seven fields out here for football, and I want six more for soccer, and I want to have a, well, that's their tourism. That's their economic development that are together, where, or that's their economic development together with Parks and Rec. Ours is with tourism, which leads to a lot of events. Waterfowl Festival being one of the great ones that feeds so many pockets of all the nonprofits in Talbot County who step up, make their money, that then they in turn take from those tourists who are just emptying their pockets here, and then they give it back, whether they're sponsoring a Little League team or a softball or field hockey or a field or doing all kinds of different things. You really need to be active. You need to be physically capable to do it. But at the end of the day, when COVID struck and was at its worst, I used the YMCA. When we partnered with the YMCA to have free childcare, I didn't have another choice. I, I, my wife had to go to work, I had to come in here, I had to, had this stuff to do, and those were the days that the kids would go there. So I did benefit from some additional financial compensation during a very challenging time. I hope that never happens to anyone. I hope no one ever goes through the four years that we went through, ever. But inflation is a killer, and, and I, I would not vote for anything that would put us above anybody else. We have a revenue cap. Everybody in here, every department head, every, every, anybody in here can leave Talbot County and go make more money. That, that's how it is. Unfortunately, we can't pay you what we wish we could because of the way that we're structured, and I like the way we're structured. So I, I want us to be treated the exact same way because there's just no way that a council can sit up here fat and happy and then working with department heads who don't even have that opportunity. You will be pushing people out the door. So I, I will be supporting the amended option on this.
Okay, I guess, um, thank you, Mr. DeVilio.
Thank you, colleagues. I, I feel, um, I think we're all right, and, um, you know, we put our, we put our lives on the line here and, and families and, and, and sit up here, and you, you, you rarely think about the money aspect that, that comes to us. You know? You know, we're, we're all right by, by saying that it's not really driven up here about the money. It's really about, you know, how you, how, how the public feels about putting it on the ballot. It didn't pass in fourteen. So what's, what's reasonable, you know, to put on the ballot that, that council feels like it's reasonable? You know, Mr. Lusher, you're, you're at twenty grand, you know, and Ms. Price, you're at twenty-five grand. You know, I, I try to, I try to put myself in the shoes of, of the taxpayer, and the taxpayer, it's an important year. You know, we just come off the pandemic, like Mr. DeVilio said, and there's, you know, there's a lot of people that want to voice their opinion, a lot of changes going on. The county's growing, um, and everybody's, you know, excited about their own things that they want to see happen at Talbot County in the next twenty or thirty years. So, you know, me and Mr. Lusher are running again, um, you know, but, you know, the, the thought process of, of, of me running isn't necessarily concerned about the pay. So, and, and I'm sure Mr. Lusher is the same way. It's, it's, you, you want to be up in here because you have a passion to help the, the community and do, um, service work for the community. That, that's kind of why we're all here, and, you know, you eat and sleep this day and night is, is what you do, and you think about it, you know, constantly. So, you know, with, with all your family and your jobs and all that stuff. So, you know, and it, it's hard, you know, it's, it's actually, the, the hard part of it is, is the mental aspect of how hard it is. You know, especially when you, you know, you try to have a family and you, you've got friends here and you try to, you know, try to be, you know, do the right thing for a lot of people. But, you know, listening to my colleagues, um, and I respect them very well, what they've all said, and they're all a hundred percent right. I, I think, I think I could live with, you know, an increase in the sense, because that's, that's all we talked about is increases and things, inflation, and, and that's all we do talk about is increases. And I think, you know, if you took the four thousand, or fourteen thousand that we're doing now, and, you know, I think the president should get maybe a hundred thousand, but that's just me. But, but, you know, I just think a round number of twenty grand, twenty grand or so, like a five or six thousand dollar increase. You know, probably it's reasonable. I'm just thinking of the taxpayer. What's, what's reasonable? I, I think twenty-five probably is, is a little, that's, that's approaching a ten, a ten grand increase. I, I would, I would recommend, you know, you said nineteen-two, and you come up with that, you know, I, I, you know, I'd be, that, that's fine, but I'd rather use a round number and just go twenty grand, and whatever everybody decides, if it's another thousand dollars for the president, that's fine, too. So, you know, that, that's my thoughts. But it's really, in a sense, not going to be up to us. It's going to be up to the public to, to want to be able to do that. So, you know, I, I can go either way. That's, that's kind of my thoughts.
So I don't, I don't think it's, um, you know, a few thousand dollars, right, that it sounds like, you know, to us, again, put it back into perspective of the budget. To hear that we shouldn't be higher than anybody else, to me, is a little disturbing because, I mean, you could put it in perspective of how, you know, what your budget is and things, and things like that, um, but why would we, I mean, we're not talking about going more than probably higher than about five other counties in the entire state at, you know, at twenty-five thousand. in the entire state at, you know, at twenty-five thousand, five, five, five or six. And if you were to look at the, you know, our budget, and also how much additional we have to fund, like on the school system because of the split and the formula, you know, with, you know, something like Carolina and Dorchester, for example, who have smaller budgets than us, but larger salaries, again, only by a couple of thousand dollars, but they also get twice as much state support as we do. And again, putting this into perspective, it might sound like a huge increase, but this hasn't been raised in twenty to thirty years, something like that. And you just talked about inflation. Well, do we not put an inflation factor on us? Unfortunately, this is under, you know, this has to go on the ballot, and we, and again, I said at the top, what I like about this is that it does give a future council the ability, you know, to go up with four, you know, with a four-fifths vote, so that you're not necessarily stuck at that level. You should be able to tie it to what maybe you do for your employees and at least go up with some type of cost of living. But even to Mr. Lusher, your point, that if you would put the inflation factor on, you're at twenty-three, right? So at nineteen-two, you haven't even kept up with inflation. And is, I look at every penny of the budget. That's what I do. You know, you have the, you have the big-ticket items that are, you know, you know, fifty million dollars for the schools, down to places that we give fifteen thousand dollars a year as a stipend. It all matters. But when you put this into perspective, and what the hourly rate is, and what this would mean to our budget, to dicker over whether we're going to add fifty thousand to the budget or twenty-five thousand dollars to the budget at a little bit higher rate, you know, maybe we go with your inflation number of twenty-three, because nineteen-two is just way too low. Maybe you do that one. It's, it's, it's not going to make the difference in the budget because everybody's been so good with the budget here. And the better people that you have up here. I don't want just people running for office that can afford to do so. You know, that, you know, if they have their own business and it is a philanthropic, thopic, item. Again, we are all here for a reason, because we love our community and we want to make a difference. But you also need to have something that's, you know, more reasonable, more in tune with where today's, you know, inflation and stuff is, and like Mr. Pack said, you know, how hard the job really is. So whether it's twenty-five, or twenty-three, or nineteen is not going to impact the budget, and I don't know that it's going to make a difference to the voter. They either are going to support it or not.
Let me add, so that's what I want to discuss. Okay, so it sounds like there's enough of us that are interested in doing this that it'll happen. So let's discuss how it'll happen. In 2014, it was on the ballot?
It was.
What was the number at that time?
The number?
What was it going to be raised to in 2014?
I believe it was sixteen.
Sixteen, sixteen-five.
Okay.
I mean, obviously, things have changed since then.
And I'm just, and this is me, and of course, I don't think like anybody else. If I'm looking at this ballot and I'm voting as a Republican, and Talbuck County Republican, whatever, you're looking at this ballot and voting on this question of giving them a raise. First off, you're going to be like, ah, you know, but second of all, if you're looking at twenty-five grand, then it's a round number, will it even say in the ballot question what it's being raised from?
Yes.
Okay, so... Like, I feel like sales mentality, and you think about this in your store, you know, the fourteen ninety-nine.
Right.
You know, if it's something along those lines, that they feel like they're getting a deal, they're going to be more inclined to do it, which is already a hard step up to get them to do it. So I feel like, you know, if you want to go with the amendment, I'm good with that number. If you'd want to go with something like a, like a twenty-three, something like that. If you're going with a round number of twenty-five, I think you're going to have a harder time getting the votes to do it.
Let me interject something. Twice we, and not on this, twice we did the tax cap thing. And the first time we did it, it didn't pass. Because we didn't do the legwork to explain to the public in that case what it was going to really be used for. They just saw, oh, tax increase, and they automatically said, nope, right? And yet, when we did this in twenty, twenty, right, the, the, we really did a good job. We had, of course, we had the community and all of that. And I'm, you know, certainly willing, and I think people, to get the message out, what we said tonight. We can't just vote tonight and let it go to November. We need to continue to explain, and I don't expect the candidates to do that. But we need to get out there and explain exactly what we said tonight. We need to put together a little, you know, one pager or whatever, because that's what made the revenue cap pass two years ago. So to your point, you know, I don't know that the number is the deal breaker. I think it's the messaging.
And I think that what we've said here tonight, you know, me being against this firmly, but supporting it, being willing to support it, I think that that, if, I don't have Amy Stewart anymore, but somehow, the five of us sound bites together, I think, would be enough. But it's going to take, because we're not going to have the, you know, the Tax Payers Association and the teachers agreeing on it. There's nobody but just the five of us.
Right.
Right.
But we might be, you know, in tonight, you know, we might be able to find some people who, who get it, who understand. Former council people, you know, and just do a little marketing. I'm certainly willing to help do that, just because I know how, how important it is, and it doesn't benefit me at all. But I want to make sure that everybody who has a desire to run for public office can do so, whether they're independently wealthy, you know, or not. And that is, that it is tough. And there are people, I know there are people who have said, "God, I'd love to run for office," but I'm not willing to take that risk because it might, you know, do A, B, or C. And I just want everybody to have the ability, and, you know, it is a little bit of a cushion, you know. It's not a lot. And again, it's going to look like a lot. I get it. But it's the, I think it's the messaging. So, you know, if you're wanting to support something, the true inflation factor, you know, and go with twenty-three or twenty-two-nine, if that sounds better, you know, then that's okay, too. But I think the other, I think the amendment number is a little low.
Mr. Lusher?
I'm, we've talked a lot, but we haven't opened it up to the public yet, so maybe we should hear from anybody who wants to speak on this.
Hey, Ray, can you give us a raise?
I knew you were asleep. Sorry, sorry about that. Would anybody like to speak maybe about this, you know, what your thoughts are?
Uh-oh, Lynn, you're out there again.
Lynn, come on up. Come on up. Give me your opinion.
You don't have to. I'm not going to put you on the spot as a candidate.
Me?
Yeah. No, okay, no problem.
I'm not here over this.
No problem, no problem. Okay, so if nobody else is, is...
Clay?
Yeah, yeah, we're not going to comment on this.
Remember, it's coming out of your salary.
Yeah, exactly. So how do we want to handle this? Do we want to, do we want to table this?
What?
I don't think we have a timeline.
We do have a timeline.
That we need, in order for me to prepare the ballot questions and get it to the, to the Board of Elections to get on the ballot, I have to send it to them by, I think it's August 5th, which means this needs to be voted on either today or on the 26th.
Let's, let's, let's hit a happy medium. Mr. Lusher, would you go with the...
Right, and they'd have to, well, the amendment would have to be, you know,
Introduced, yes.
Introducing amendment, show hands, deal with that, and then address the resolution.
Well, we can, we can start with, we can amend the amendment, but why don't we start with introducing the amendment?
Okay.
Do we need to do a new amendment, or can I, can I, how's this work? Should we amend the amendment or do just do like amendment number two?
Before it's voted on, yes.
Pardon?
You can amend the amendment before it's voted on, yes.
So could I make a motion to amend what hasn't yet been introduced?
The amendment hasn't been introduced yet.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For introducing the amendment.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Well, it depends. I guess I can...
So all the, the amendment was just a change of that dollar figure, and all the other wording states the same thing for the record.
It's a dollar figure.
Just for the public record.
Yep.
All right, so then I would like to amend this amendment and put in twenty-two-nine.
Why don't we do twenty-three and twenty-five for president?
I agree with that.
Three.
Yeah, it's fine, twenty-three. I was just trying to go with your fourteen ninety-nine.
I know, I know, I know, but that's what I'm thinking, twenty-three is not twenty-five, and it's not, and it, and it has a basis of inflation, has a thought process behind it. So I would make a motion to amend the amendment dollar amount to be twenty-three thousand. And it already has other thou, you only get one more. That's it. So just for twenty-three thousand. So I amend the amendment to be twenty-three thousand.
Okay. Did you want to change the president's salary, too?
Yeah, he already gets an extra grand.
Okay. I'll second that, then.
The amendment, the amendment has been introduced. It has not been voted on.
She's amended the amendment, which is okay.
She's making a motion to amend the amendment to change the figure.
And we've got that.
Frank amended Ms. Price's amendment.
Oh, can I do that?
Well...
Why don't you, I'll withdraw mine.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I was just trying to go with your, your thinking. Fine, I'll amend to twenty-three thousand.
Okay.
And I'll second if she needs one.
Okay, so we've got, we got a motion and a second to change the amendment to twenty-three thousand dollars.
Correct.
Okay, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Nay.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
I abstain.
All right, so that's the figure on the table. So that's, that's now, that's now the amendment. So we need to vote on whether to change from twenty-five thousand now to this amendment. Okay, so, the amendment?
No, we amended, we amended the amendment, which...
You introduced, you introduced the amendment to nineteen-two, and then you made a motion to amend that figure to twenty-three thousand. So now you have to vote on the amendment to change the resolution as introduced.
Okay.
Well, they voted on the amendment.
Yeah, we just did.
We voted to amend the amendment. You voted to amend the amendment. You have not voted on the amendment, the underlying amendment.
Let's try this again, then.
Okay.
Okay.
You now have Resolution 332 before you as amended.
Right, okay, I'm with you.
Right.
For final vote, or to postpone it to the 26th, either way you want to handle it.
Yeah, let's do it now.
Let's get it done.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
So you voted to the amendment.
No, they approved, they approved the amendment.
They introduced the original amendment, and there was a motion to amend that amendment. That motion carried, so now what they had was an amended amendment. They have to vote on the resolution itself.
Okay.
So that's what we just did, so we'll go back and, and, and vote on the amended amendment to approve that.
So you unanimously voted to amend Resolution 332 to change the figure. The figure is now changed from twenty-five thousand to twenty-three thousand. So that's what you have to vote on now. So you have 332 as amended to vote.
Okay, let's do it again.
Let's just make sure we have an extra one in there, just in case.
Well, I thought we just did that, but...
I think so, too.
So, so, Madam Secretary, what we're doing here is on Resolution 332 that was amended to twenty-three thousand, that's what we're voting on.
So this is the final vote on...
So I would make a motion that we accept Resolution 332 as amended.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a motion and a second. Madam?
Who's second?
I did.
Yep. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right.
One more time.
That's not...
Okay.
Now, MCTV, go get us some good video clips that we can use, please.
And I'll say this in passing, and then this is my last comment on this. And one of my favorite movies is the movie Moneyball. At the end of the movie, when Billy Bean is going off and got the big contract by the, by the Boston Red Sox, and got the character that's playing the part of the statistician. Well, he says, it's not about the money, it's what the money says, you know. And I think that for the voter, if you think this elected, this position is one that should be honored in your community, and one that you thinks is deserving, then you'll vote for it, you know. And again, I think that is what you want your council to look like and what you want your council to represent. So whether it's nineteen, or twenty-three, or twenty-five, it's not about the money, it's what the, it's what the money says. And if it says that you, you think that the council, the position itself, not the individual, but the position itself is worthy of an increase, then you'll, you'll do so. And again, this is not a, every other Tuesday, part-time job, you know, in my opinion, so.
I'd like to make one other comment. Undoubtedly, this is going to be a question that the candidates who are running are asked. Should we vote for this ballot question? And I would actually ask the public respectfully, don't ask them. They don't necessarily know yet. And if you think that you're going to vote for somebody because they don't think they should get more of a salary, you're voting for the wrong reason. This should stand on its own. And I would say that at candidate forums that are upcoming, and you're, if you want to put a, whoever's putting the forum together, and you want to go down the line and ask the candidates whether they support the salary increase, I would respectfully ask you not to do so, because we're the ones who have been up here. We understand it. Let them run on their issues, and let that stand for that. Because if that's the reason you're going to vote for or against somebody who's running for county council, I think you're making the decision on the wrong subject matter.
And I fully agree with that, for the basis of, we can't vote to give ourselves a raise because it takes that much time to know what it's going to be for the next people. So I hope, I hope whoever's running the forums can understand and appreciate that.
And, and just a message out there to the candidates, if you get asked, I would take, take a little page from, from what we just said up here. If you're, you're new, you two are the only ones who could answer it. But the other eight people who are going to be in the general election, honestly, that, they could, you know, it's not the reason they're doing it, but they don't know enough about the job, so. I mean, I would just say, I remember another question that was asked in 2014 that had absolutely nothing to do with what we do up here. It was not a topic that we would ever, ever address at this level. And I remember this, that the three incumbents who were running, I'm not going to say what the question was, but the three incumbents who were running respectfully said, "This is not an issue that will ever cross my desk. If and when it does, I will answer the question." The two new people decided to answer the question, and the three incumbents went first. And it's like, did you not take a page out of that and understand that? But they, they chose to do it, and they probably made half the people happy and half the people mad. And it had nothing to do with anything that they would have ever run for in office, so.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Thank you, counsel. It's good. Okay. Need a little break? Good? Okay. Okay, Madam Secretary, let's, let's move on to eligible vote on, on all these bills. So I guess what we'll do is, we want to go ahead and start with, um...
Do you want me to read each one or read them all?
I think, I think on this situation, I think we're going to have to do each one. Okay. Yep, yep, yeah, we sort of think that's probably the best way to go. So, all right, Madam Secretary, could you start off with Bill 1501, please?
Bill number 1501, a bill to amend Bill number 1474 to amend the appropriation for improvements to Airport Road.
Okay.
Should we move?
We do have Angela here.
Yeah, I thought they were coming up here, in case you have any questions.
Okay, all right.
Should we have both up here at the table, though?
Well, I was waiting for Ms. Parks, but she couldn't ignore me, so.
Okay, if he's moved, I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion, well, I'll let Ms. Parks sit down. Okay, anybody that have any questions, okay, I got a motion second for 1501. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay.
Bill number 1502, a bill to amend Bill number 1418 to amend the appropriation for a capital project for the connection of Barneck and Fairbank communities. for the connection of Barneck and Fairbank communities to the Region Five Tillman wastewater treatment plan.
Should we move?
Second.
Any questions? Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Bill number fifteen oh three, a bill to authorize improvements to county bridges.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, got a motion second, is there any questions?
He won't even look at me.
Yeah. Can you get that damn Tunis, Tunis Mill straight, please?
Yeah.
Shall I?
No clickety-clack, clickety-clack anymore, right?
Okay, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Clickety-clack, clickety-clack, right?
Mr. Pat, it's Wood, and you want me to do it?
Yeah.
Go ahead and take care of it.
Bill number fifteen oh four, a bill to amend Bill number fourteen seventy-eight, to amend the appropriation for the expansion of broadband to unserved and underserved areas of Talbot County.
Should we move?
Second.
Got a motion second, is there any questions, this is a, a big bill, this is going to help Talbot County, it's, it's a fantastic way of helping the community, that's for sure. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Bill number fifteen oh five, a bill to authorize a study for the replacement of a nine-one-one Division Computer Aided Dispatch CAD system.
Should we move?
Second.
Okay, got a motion second, any, anybody got any questions? Okay, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Bill number fifteen oh six, a bill to authorize improvements to county roads.
Should we move?
Second.
Got a motion second to move forward with fifteen oh six, any questions? Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Bill number fifteen oh seven, a bill to amend Bill numbers thirteen sixty-one, thirteen thirty-two, thirteen oh seven, and twelve sixty-seven, to amend the appropriation for the mapping and evaluation and rehabilitation or replacement of county culverts.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion second to start mapping out the culverts, is there any questions? Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Bill number fifteen oh eight, a bill to authorize the design, renovation, construction of offices and other work areas for the Board of Elections for Talbot County, Maryland.
Mm-hmm.
Should we move?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second on fif- fifteen oh eight, to do some design work and renovations to the election board in Talbot County. Any questions? But I couldn't get it out, sorry. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Bill number fifteen oh nine, a bill to amend Bill number fourteen eighty-four, to amend the appropriation for a capital project for the construction of emergency medical services stations.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, Bill fifteen oh nine, for a medical service station, any questions? Can you call the vote, Madam Secretary, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Bill number fifteen ten, a bill to amend Bill numbers fourteen fifty-seven, fourteen twenty-two, thirteen thirty-five, and thirteen seventeen, to amend the appropriation for stormwater management and upgrades for Goldsboro Neck Road and Airport Road.
Quick question on this, Mr. Stamp, the, uh, oh, Mr. Clark, the, the one million dollar grant that Cassandra, Cassandra just put in for, is that going to be part of fifteen ten?
Yes. There will probably be grant funding associated with fifteen ten.
Okay.
So that CIP project is a combination between local funds and grant dollars, so the, the grant money will go toward this project.
Okay, okay. Okay, do I have a motion?
Should we move?
Second.
Okay, got a motion second to move forward with fifteen ten on management of upgrades of Goldsboro Neck Road, any questions? Madam. Okay, thank you. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Bill number fifteen twelve, a bill to authorize a capital project for the purchase and installation of an emergency generator for the Mardingham Sanitary District.
Should we move?
Okay, got, okay, we have a motion second to move fifteen twelve to vote, is there any questions? Okay, on installation of emergency generator, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Bill number fifteen thirteen, a bill to authorize improvements to county park and recreation facilities.
Should we move?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to move forward with fifteen thirteen on improvements of county parks and recreation facilities, any questions or? Okay, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Bill number fifteen fifteen, a bill to authorize the resurfacing repaving of the St. Michael's School parking lot.
Should we move?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion second for fifteen fifteen to go ahead and repave the school parking lot in St. Michael's. Any questions, discussions? Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher, I mean, Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Bill number fifteen sixteen, a bill to authorize architectural and engineering fees associated with the renovation of the St. Michael's branch of the Talbot County Free Library.
Mm-hmm.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to, on fifteen sixteen, to engineer fees and renovations for St. Michael's Library, any discussion?
Well, I, I just want to add.
Yep, yep, sure.
And, and I know, at least I won't be around and to see this through, but I will certainly be paying attention to it, and I hope that this is one that the next council really gets behind, I think that the librarian and her staff have certainly made the case to this body of the need for renovations down there in St. Michael's, the library, not just in St. Michael's, I think, as part of any community body, libraries pay an important role for people to congregate, play an important role when it comes to dissemination of information, and, and also allowing people space for programming, so I think it's, it's just not about going in, and also for study space. I think that there are a lot of underprivileged students who may not have adequate study space in the homes that they live in, they may be homes where you maybe have multiple generations living there, and, and for them to have a library where they can go to and find a quiet space to study, I think also votes well for the libraries being a part of a, of a neighborhood. Look, I remember back some, some thirty, forty years ago, when the library closed in, in my neighborhood back in Turner Station, and what a big hit that was for the citizens there, I was, I was already grown and grown when it happened, but, well, I was already gone, I wasn't grown, but I was gone. I'm not that old, so, but we had moved away, but I just remembered how much of a drain that it, that it had on the community, losing your library, so, again, certainly won't be here to see this through, but we'll be paying attention to it along the way, and, and adding my voice to the conversation, so.
Okay.
Thank you for sharing that story, it's often that I forget about what would happen if we lost one of these, after realizing how much benefit we have by having them. Thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay. Madam Secretary, it's, it's, I lost count here, it's fifteen sixteen, yeah, I'm sorry, we got a motion second, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Bill number fifteen seventeen, a bill to authorize the construction of a storage facility for the Talbot County Public Schools.
Should we move?
Second.
Um, is there a motion second?
Yeah, already done.
Okay, sorry, fif- fifteen seventeen, is there any discussion? Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Bill number fifteen eighteen, a bill to amend Bill numbers ten eighty-two and twelve eighty-five, to amend the appropriation for improvements to the Tunis Mills Bridge.
There's your bridge.
Can't even bring myself around to make a motion.
Would you like to introduce this motion?
Oh, my goodness gracious.
Ray ain't even looking up either.
He's not getting up, he won't look at me, he won't even look at me. So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to go ahead and renovate the, the bridge next week.
The one that's been falling down for the last twenty years.
Falling down, exactly, we'll get, we'll get there. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
No.
He banned from that area.
Yeah, please, I bet I kept him jumping up there for it.
Exactly, we'll get his tires on that one. Yep.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Absolutely.
Bill number fifteen nineteen, a bill to authorize countywide water quality improvement projects.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to go ahead and countywide water quality improvement project, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Bill number fifteen twenty, a bill to authorize the construction and installation of a sunshade structure for an outdoor classroom and playground for the White Marsh Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to go ahead and upgrade the outdoor playground at White Marsh, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Bill number fifteen twenty-one, a bill to authorize the construction and installation of a security fence for the White Marsh Elementary School.
Should we move?
Second.
Okay, we got motion second on fifteen twenty-one to put a security fence down White Marsh, any questions or discussion? Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Council.
Okay, thank you guys, appreciate everything. Welcome, Ms. Sparks, that was your first, you did very well, very well.
It's more comfortable when you sit up here, too.
Before she runs away, since I missed her, since I missed her introduction.
Yep.
I just want to officially welcome Ms. Sparks to Talbot County, and I'm, I am thrilled that you're here, and I, and you're just going to be able to pick up and do wonderful things here and continue the tradition that we have here, so I apologize for being late and missing your introduction, but I am absolutely thrilled you're here.
Thank you, Councilwoman Price.
Yep, thank you. Okay, um. Well, I just want to make sure, did you, are you, are you, you had, you had nothing more, okay, I'm just, I'm just double checking with you, if you missed something, that's all. Okay, now let's, let's go to public comment, we have nothing, really? Okay, alright, now let's go to the council comments, um, let's go with, uh, Mr. DeVio.
Ah, no further comments at this time.
No? Okay, Mr. Vice President?
Uh, yes, four years ago, I learned about the gaps in broadband internet service around this county. Our municipalities in densely settled areas generally have, all have service, but in areas where it had not made business sense for internet service providers to provide coverage, we had, and we still have, wide gaps. This council put out a request for proposals and awarded a project to Eastern Utilities, which secured thirteen million dollars in United States Department of Agriculture Rural Connect funding to cover ninety percent of the twenty-eight hundred unserved and underserved addresses in this county. Our Eastern Utilities partners then secured some state broadband funding to, to serve additional addresses. This spring, the council allocated one and three-quarter million dollars of American Rescue Plan Act funding to provide a match and to eliminate capital charges for new customers. And this week, they released the news that the State's Connect Maryland Initiative will fund all of the remaining unserved addresses in this county. This means that we have achieved funding for one hundred percent of the addresses in the county. This is a promise kept, and we, now, of course, we still have to complete the construction, but that construction is taking place as we speak, every day, and you can follow that progress on the Eastern Utilities Connect Talbot map. I can't overemphasize what a transformative moment this is for Talbot County. This is, this is huge news and good news for this county.
Thank you, Mr. Lesher, Mr. Pat?
I would, I would just echo that as well, um, you know, I was very excited when I got that email from Mr. Horner over at Eastern Utility, showing that they received the last, the last mile of funding, if you would.
Yeah.
So that the new, the new residents are being connected to that broadband service, won't have to pay a, a capital charge onto their, their bill. And so I'm very happy to hear that, and yes, the work is being, being done as we move along. I may mention earlier when we had discussion regarding the, uh, the ballot question, about this being an award-winning council and all the works that we've, we've done over the last four years together, and through some very trying times. We, we won an award down at Ocean City for the Maryland Association of Counties, due to our work there, we're going with the Neighborhood Service Center, which Mr. DeVio is, is chairman of, and we also received an award recently from the National Association of Counties, and I just want to share with the, with our listeners at home, this is a twenty-twenty Achievement Award, and if, from the National Association of Counties is proud to award Talbot County with the twenty-twenty-two Achievement Award for its program entitled Creativity in County Government, Talbot County Leverages Resiliency Strategy to Address COVID-nineteen. And again, we, we put a lot of time and effort into COVID-nineteen, Ms. Van Hoosier's not here, she carried a lot of the weight with our business sector, helping them in getting those dollars into their hand, I think she distributed somewhere in a neighborhood of six million dollars worth of, or was that the total number I'm thinking about, maybe her number is somewhat smaller. But we handed out a lot of money to our business communities through COVID, we did a lot of coordination with our towns, a lot of coordination with our feeding programs and other statewide departments and, and agencies, so when citizens don't see what we're doing behind the scenes, because it's not, it's not a Tuesday, this council is, is still at work, and I think the recognition that we receive from the state agency, the Maryland Association of Counties, I'm sorry, the Maryland Community Action Partnership,